Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, October 15, 2013 Board of Education meeting. The meeting, I'd like to ask us to please rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With the Board's permission, I'd like to add an Agenda Item, Item 9.7 relating to a request by the trustee of the General Warren Lundquist Trust to change its trustee, its administrator, so with the Board's permission, I'd like to add that at Paragraph 9.7. Is there a motion that we do that? So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Now, before we get to the minutes, tonight is, of course, the last regular Board business meeting before we have a little bit of turnover on the Board in two weeks or three weeks, whatever, it is almost a month. One member is going to be leaving, John Ireland, who has been, served on the Board for the last four years, and he is unable to be here tonight, these Tuesday meetings, because of federal holidays interfered with a commitment that he'd made in Boston, so unfortunately, he's either going to be late or not here at all. And I know that, I want to acknowledge the work that John has done over the last four years in an area where we was maybe, was maybe not our strongest area, and that is in building-related issues, and particularly management-related issues. John, you know, everybody on the Board has some particular areas of expertise that contribute in some unique way. John's is perhaps more tangible and more identifiable than, say, mine, for example. John is a professional in this area and really has done an outstanding job over the last four years, highlighting the needs of the buildings, trying to do what we need to do to try to make sure that the buildings are maintained adequately, that budgets are, adequately reflect what's needed to take care of the buildings, so I certainly want to publicly acknowledge his great contributions to the Board over the last four years, and I wouldn't be surprised, Dr. Freeman, if you called on him from time to time to ask issues, questions relating to what he, his opinion would be, and I hope we'll continue to dialogue with him.
We already have a conversation.
All right, good, well. And then, the other Board member who is going to be leaving our service is sitting to my right, your left, Mr. Bishop, Keith Bishop, who I think it is the case is the longest-serving member of the Board of Education in the history of the town. And I know that he's been on the Board for 22 years, and I, did I do this right? Was George W., Georgia H.W. Bush President when you were first, 1991? Yeah, that's right, yeah. Clinton was elected in 92, inaugurated in 93, so that's a long time. You have been at, I think it's fair to say, hundreds and hundreds of meetings. You bring, what you bring to the Board is, just as with Mr. Ireland, very identifiable, the business acumen and the expertise of somebody who, first of all, is a small business operator, maybe it's not such a small business anymore, it seems like it's a big business as I try to get down Route 1 on a Sunday afternoon, but...
Coming Monday.
Yeah. But also somebody who's got, who's got a long-term perspective about what it means to be a part of this community and what it takes for this community to operate. Your perspective, I think, has been one that has been extraordinarily valuable, both the commitment to children's education, the commitment to making sure that our facilities are the best that they can be within budgetary concerns and limitations, the whole concept of balancing fiscal responsibility with the, with the, the needs of students and what needs to be done to improve the curriculum, and you've always brought that great perspective to our budget discussions and always asked good questions, excellent, hard questions, and tried to keep the administration on its collective toes to make sure that if, that money is money, and it's something that, there is no need to spend money if there isn't a positive education-related impact from it. So it, I know that some Boards give retiring Board of Ed members plaques and chairs and things like that, I'm sorry, we just don't do that.
Don't need it.
But what you do leave us with is the gratitude of really a community, the thanks and the respect of every, each and every member of the Board of Education who you've served with over the last 22 years, and I suppose that would be many, as you add them up. I cannot, I really cannot express just what your service has meant to the town of Guilford, and I want to thank you on behalf of everybody. Thank you very much, appreciate that. Thank you.
Sit down. Thank you. I wasn't expecting to have, make any comments, but I'll briefly say it's been a privilege to actually serve and to do so over the years. It was former Board Chair that got me involved back in the 91, 90 timeframe, Jim Kenefick, Judge Jim Kenefick, who still is actively going to work in his 80s in New Haven, in the courthouse in his retired capacity, still doing related work to the judgeship even though he's beyond the official age where he must transfer over. So him and Bob Pleasure, who was the Housemaster here at Guilford High School back in the 70s, and then Principal A.W. Cox was the other one that I worked closely with and did some coaching for Destination Imagination and Odyssey of the Mind and those programs there got me up to the level here. It has been a pleasure and a joy to do so, not leaving town, but 22 years without term limits, and there's also a time when you recognize that there are plenty of other people who can come along and serve and do as good, if not better, job. I will still be in the community and around to, what the right word is here, can be pester to some people, it might be to ask good questions and show up at meetings, and for other things it may be to say, "Things are doing great, then I'll let you do your job." So with that, thank you very much for Bill, your kind words here. You've been on the Board together with me for, you're on to your, let's see, fourth term now here, beginning of fourth term?
99.
99, so.
Clinton was President.
But walk through, Dr. Giblin was superintendent when I first came on, and then Barbara Truex, and then on to Dr. Porcella, and now to Dr. Freeman. Never expected when I was recruited and signed up that I would see so many superintendents go through the path, but it's been a joy to work with each one of them in the Boards and people associated with it, and what we've collectively, you know, made improvements over time. I think it's a steady, continued job, and it's in back in my old 4H days, and one of the, part of the 4H motto was to make the best better, and I think we continue to do that, and, you know, what you think is best one day, next turn you wake up and it isn't the best anymore, and you've got to keep working for improvement. So we've seen that here in the, in the community, state, and the federal level on various things associated with education. So thank you very much, and I'll let the meeting continue on.
All right. Item 3 on the agenda is to take action on the minutes of the two regular meetings, well, run regular meeting, one workshop meeting, September 9 and September 23, 2013. I should note that there were also multiple meetings relating to negotiations, but we do not have to separately approve minutes for each of those meetings under state law. So is there a motion to approve the September 9 and September 23 minutes?
So, second.
Any corrections, changes, additions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Ms. Renner, Item 4, you reviewed the expenditures for the month of September?
I did, yep. We discussed them a great extent in the Finance Subcommittee meeting. The expenditures for the month of September were $4,548,000, and that was just over 16% of our budget on a year-to-date basis, which is within a half a percent of where we were last year, so things are at least consistent. And there were tons of bills because the payments made in September were all of the setting up of school for the new year, so all of the supplies and so on that we need to start the school year with came through with the bills in September. We discussed a lot of interesting things that are going on in the district during the Finance Subcommittee meeting, things that you really notice when you sit and look through all the bills. Just to mention some examples, we discussed a robotic unit that an elementary-age child who cannot always be present in school is using to participate in class. We discussed the Be Safe Emergency Response System, which allows first responders in an emergency situation to have technology where they can actually see a layout of the building affected. We discussed the participation in the Connecticut Center for School Change, which is sort of a PLC for superintendents, from what I could tell, which has great value for our district. And also some materials purchased from Johns Hopkins to support high-achieving math students. In addition, I'll mention, a large expenditure of note was that we paid out unused sick days for two retiring educators, $38,000 each approximately, and this is a situation that would apply to anyone hired in the district prior to 1998, so the new rules are different, but for retiring educators who've been here for that amount of time, there is a payment made which hits our budget at that time. And with the great amount of retirees this year, 12, we paid approximately $371,000 in that regard. So are there any questions?
Questions, comments? Okay, we did spend a lot of time, obviously, in the Finance Committee about that, but in any event, is there a motion then to approve the expenditures for the month of September?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Yeah, let me, let me make a suggestion on the agenda now. I know that there are several people here interested in the High Achieving Learners update, so with the Board's permission, why don't we, Mr. Masenti, are you going to introduce the student representatives, the new student representatives? Dr. Freeman is, okay. Why don't we do that now, and then we'll go to, how many people are here relating to the High Achieving Learners issue? How many are here on something else? All right. What I'm going to suggest that we do is, we'll do the student representative introduction, then ask for your report, then ask for public comment, if that makes sense, because it may, in the abstract, you may be commenting on something that's already in the works. Does that make sense to people?
It does.
Okay. Why don't we do it that way then? If, Dr. Freeman, if I could ask you to go to Item 7 and introduce the new student representatives?
Mr. Masenti and I are happy to introduce our new student representatives this year. Joining us, we have two seniors and one junior. He and I have met with the students. I know that they are going to bring a lot to the table when they come, as we did last year. I've informed the students that we're looking for them to, each month in the regular meeting, give this Board an update on what's happening, not just at the high school, but at schools throughout our community, and I have encouraged them, at times, to participate with this Board in discussion around Agenda Items, where we'll benefit from having an active student voice in that conversation. So as Mr. Bloss and I prepare Agenda Items, I will let the students know in advance, and we will encourage them to participate with you, the Board, when, when we have an issue. I know that last year, students participated in conversations around safety, I know that we had students participate in conversations around changing of GPA and how that's going to be calculated at our high school, and in conversations about student activities, particularly around prom for underclassmen. We've made significant changes in the last few years, and those decisions have been informed by having students like these at the table tonight. So, welcome to all of you. On behalf of the Board, I want to thank you for being willing to do this, and I'm happy to introduce to the Board Gabby Sejrenay, who will be joining us, Fred Trotta, both seniors, and Catherine Rosadini, junior, who will be joining us and then carrying on in this role next year, so that we will begin to develop some consistency as we move forward. And I know that they're prepared with their first report for the Board this evening.
Oh, good. Okay. Well, why don't you go ahead and then, and welcome, welcome, we're very glad to have you with us. Go ahead and why don't you give us your report?
Hi, I'm Fred Trotta, I'm a senior here, as Dr. Freeman said. And we're going to start out tonight by talking about things happening at the high school. A lot of exciting stuff happening here. I know there was concern about the construction and the noise, if it created any, if it was going to disrupt the learning process, and I'm happy to say, it doesn't disrupt it at all. I have a class that's right on top of the construction, and even through the blasting and machinery, you hardly notice it. We've all become accustomed to it, and not much is happening there. We're excited to see the concrete for the foundation starting to be poured, so we get to see the high school, even though we're not going to be here for it, it's exciting to see part of it go up. And also, because of the new high school coming in, we have a new ropes course that got put in by, behind the tennis courts, and I'm happy to say that I was able to use the new ropes course, and it is, it is amazing. We have a couple people in this room who are lucky enough to go on it too, I won't say any names, but they had some fun, and that was very exciting. Another thing we have is the College Fair, and the College Fair this year was huge. We had 165 colleges and their representatives come back into our gym, and we had, I can't, uncountable number of people in there. We had, it was constant traffic, there was a lot of buzz, and it was good to see, we had people from other schools coming, a lot of students, and it was very informative as I went. And then, last thing that I have to say is that another thing we have going on is the Sophomore College Coffee Parent Meetings in the library in the 21st, and that's just where sophomore parents can come in and talk to our guidance counselors about getting their students ready for PSATs, SATs, as well as getting ready for college in the workforce. And it's very helpful to parents to, you know, what they have to do, how they can set up their student for success.
Hi, I'm Catherine Rosadini. Dr. Freeman introduced me, I'm a junior. And our sports this fall have had an amazing year so far. Our Coast Country Boys is undefeated and they won their division. The girls soccer team is having a great year, they won their division as well, and they're also 12 and 1. The boys soccer team is having a winning season with eight wins and two losses, and the field hockey team is also having a winning season with eight to three. And also the football, volleyball, and Coast Country Girls are also having a great season as well. And to touch upon the music department, we have a concert for the chorus coming up tomorrow night at 7:30 in the auditorium, and we will be still answering Unity Week, which Gabby will be talking about, and we will be wearing Unity shirts and singing songs related to unity and acceptance. And then we also have a concert with the Window Ensemble Symphony Orchestra on October 30th at 7:30 in the auditorium.
Hi, I'm Gabby. I'd just like to talk about one of our biggest projects this year, which is the Advisory Program, that's brand-new to GHS. For this program, students will meet with teachers, and every teacher has a small group of students, and they'll meet and talk about issues such as bullying, cyberbullying, and other topics to improve the school. Right now, we plan to have one 30-minute meeting per month, but that could change, become more frequent or longer in the future. Unity Week, which Catherine mentioned, is a week which we have every year, sponsored by our Unity Club, and it's to promote unity and school spirit throughout the school. So we have Spirit Days throughout the week, that will help promote that in a school-wide assembly as part of that. And then, another big topic at school right now, especially for seniors, is college. So Fred talked about the College Fair, but in addition to that, a lot of students are working on their applications right now for the early deadline, which is for many schools, November 1st, and the regular decision deadline is January 1st, so there will be a lot going on with that in the upcoming months. And finally, we have another event coming up at our school is the Second Induction of the National Honor Society, so that's for seniors who have outstanding scholarship, leadership, service, and character, and they'll be inducted on October 29.
Perfect.
And in other schools in our district, we have, Melissa Jones had visitors last week, Ginny Brown, the Guilford Public Schools Director of People's Services, and Heather Gajaski, the Coordinator of Special Services, and they were there to observe and especially focus on the new co-teaching implementation, which is a collaboration between general and special educators to help students receive the best education they can, and that's a high learning curve, but it's going well. They also had Fire Safety Week this week. The Guilford Fire Department will visit and teach students about fire safety, and another big event for them is the Annual Halloween Carnival, which is on Friday, October 25th.
I spoke with Mr. Augustine, who's the principal of A.W. Cox, and he informed me that the students in grades one to four are studying their personal narrative and memoir writing units, they're learning how to identify the audience, the purpose of writing, and finding character development and descriptive language. He also informed me that there is a, this Thursday, there is a learning walk that will be taking place throughout the school. Picture Day is Friday, so everyone's going to be looking their best on Friday, and students and teachers are loving the new look of the school with the new carpet, and they're very excited because this week, they're most likely getting their windows installed, and they're very excited to see the sunshine again. And this November 2nd, Saturday, is they are annually holding a PTO Harvest Festival, which will be taking place there with great food, music, and activities and games.
And at Guilford Lakes, they've had readers and writers workshops happening there, a couple of art and music concerts and exhibitions. They've also had a school-wide mentoring program that's new this year, and that's basically students, older students meet with younger students, and they share the work that they've been working on, and they read to each other, and that happens twice a month, it's an all-school assembly, and that, that started last week. And another very cool thing that they've done, I like this one, is fill the bucket program, and that kicked off last week as well, and that's where students and staff members basically write on a piece of paper, nice or uplifting things about students or teachers, and they put them in their bucket. That's about all. That's what's happened around the district.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Sounds busy. Well, thank you very much for agreeing to, to serve as student representatives. We want to hear from you. If there's something going on that you think we ought to know about, just let us know, shoot us an email, whatever it happens to be. If you think there's something that ought to be on our agenda, let us know, and we can, and we can talk about it. You know, we did spend a little bit of time, I guess, last month, talking about high school start times and whether there's anything we can do about that. It's still up in the air, but certainly something we'd like to hear your input on, and look forward to seeing you this next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a nice day.
Bill said that don't be afraid to, to have your input, you can stay for, go on longer in the meeting, that if you have work to do, then we don't want to be the blame for a lack of finishing projects or homework.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice day.
We won't sign your tardy slips.
So, does that make sense, Dr. Freeman, if we, if we go to 8.2 now, you do your update on the High Achieving Learners, and if there are people who want to have input, that's fine?
Yep.
And then we can go back to, then public forum for any other topics on the agenda, and then the rest of communications, and we'll just go back in order.
I think it makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
So skipping ahead, at the close of last school year, we hosted a public forum and had a great turnout, had a long conversation, and talked about the work that the district is doing and the work that the district could be doing, and the work that the district could be shaping around our students who achieve at high levels, across grade levels in a variety of areas. What I'd like to do tonight is update the Board on work that has taken place and work that we still see in front of us moving forward into this year. Following that forum at the end of last school year, as we went through closeout, there were some unbudgeted expenditures, particularly, much of that evening focused around the conversation around mathematics. We talked about high-achieving students in all areas, but, but much of the evening focused around the area of mathematics in specific. At the end of last school year, we had time to explore and to purchase extension materials for grades one through four. These are materials that connect to the major work of the grade, but take that work far further. We were able to purchase sets of those materials for each grade level in all four of the elementary schools. As we have returned this year, Mrs. Carreri has begun meeting with teachers in those schools and beginning training around those units. So as we've talked about this in the past, I've talked about needing to both support and resource the classroom teachers. Buying materials and throwing them on the shelves is important, but it's not enough. We've got to introduce people to those materials, and we need to walk folks through how to employ those materials. So I have been in situations where great materials have been purchased, and years after the purchase, the cellophane remains on them. If you don't introduce teachers to those materials and familiarize with them, it is harder to expect somebody to be able to draw on them and use them well. Additionally, in our administrative retreat this summer, we had a conversation, we took a three-day retreat, and part of that time was spent talking about the students who achieved to high degrees in our school system. How do we support them? What do we do for those students? We want all of our students to experience rigor in every class, every day, and we don't want to leave any group untouched. So the principals and the leadership team talked over the summer about what we need to do in that area and how we need to reach out and make sure that we are bringing those folks in. This year, as we came back to school, I think most substantially, we have launched common forms across the schools in grades K through 8. These are forms and structures around referral, and referral can be made by a parent, by a family, or by a professional in the school system. So when we begin to identify a student who is achieving to high level and may have untapped capacities, may need more challenge, we've identified common forms and common procedures for referring those students to the school. We have put together a common identification form. We had identification tools in place, but we didn't have a common tool that we were using across the district to structure and to monitor the identification, a common tool for building a plan around those students, and then a tool for monitoring and communicating around those students. So part of that retreat time this summer, and I want to thank Paula McCarthy and Ginny Brown for pulling those forms together and then presenting all of those forms to, to the combined leadership team as we began this year. I have talked with principals, and I know that we are beginning to roll those forms out. I know that we have had students referred already this year. I know that we have taken students through identification procedures this year. I know that we have already reported back to students that they may have a student who doesn't meet the identified criteria for talented and gifted, and we talk about how to continue to support that child. And I know that we have begun to build some individualized plans around students, including a student who was referenced earlier, who was using some online instructional materials from Johns Hopkins to, to bolster the instruction that is happening in the classroom. Additionally, we have met with instructional coaches this year, and we have reminded the instructional coaches, and in fact, taken them back to the original job description drawn, I believe it was three years ago now, when the coaches first joined our ranks, and pointed out that supporting teachers specifically around high-achieving students is, is part of that job description, and in fact, is called out as an individual standalone bullet in that job description. So as our coaches, one, as we begin to grow the ranks of our coaches, and as the coaches continue their work this year, our district-wide coaches meet every Friday afternoon for essentially half a day with Dr. Keen, and we have made a standing item in those meetings to talk about what's happening in each of the buildings, not just instructionally writ large, not just for struggling learners, but for high-achieving learners, and how we are supporting their advancements with the coaching that is pushed into the classroom. And then most specifically, and I don't think that this was spoken about in the forum when we met last June, but it has been discussed, at least among Board members and myself, if not with the full Board, Dr. Keen and I have started meeting with organizations that work with this population of students, and we are, we are approaching people and inviting them to look at a proposal that would bring them into the school district, to look at how we support those students, and to give us feedback and to give us recommendations on how we do that work. Two weeks ago, we met with, I believe she was the past director of the Connecticut Coalition for the Gifted, we talked about her organization, we talked about doing some professional development, we talked about doing some community awareness, in fact, we talked about partnering with Madison and maybe bringing both of our communities together to talk about this population of students, and to talk, both do PD during the day and then talk in the evening, and we talked about their capacity to do a review of our services with us, that organization, and this is going to be a theme. We can't simply put a bid out on the street for an audit of our, our high-achieving students, our programming around high-achieving students. That service essentially doesn't exist in the way that special education audits exist. When this Board knew you wanted to have special education reviewed, you were able to put a bid on the street and you got, you got responses to that bid. We are approaching organizations and asking them how they would advise us and how they could facilitate this exercise for us. The Coalition for Gifted in Connecticut doesn't have a service that they provide. They did offer to consult us as we pulled together a committee and created a self-assessment. I'm not sure that that's going to meet our needs for a couple of reasons. One is I think that we would like to have an outside organization with fresh, fresh eyes come in, and two, quite honestly, I'm concerned about capacity. I'm not sure that I have a group of people right now in district that we can tap to, to organize and pull that kind of in-depth review together. So while I've been interested, and while I think we might want to move forward with some professional development or community informational components, I'm not sure that they're the organization to do that. they're the organization to do this review for us. Tomorrow, I have a conference call scheduled with the District Management Council. The District Management Council is an organization that serves hundreds of school districts and approximately four million students across the country. They work with systems learning in school districts. They grew out of Harvard. They began as an organization in Cambridge. They have an affiliation with Harvard. They are an independent organization now. They are highly respected for the special education audits that they conduct. And I'll be speaking to them tomorrow about the idea of a review that they might provide to us. They're not quite sure what we're looking for, so we're going to have a conversation about that tomorrow. Early next week, I apologize, I don't remember the exact day, but I have another conference call scheduled with Dr. Joe Ranzouli's group out of UConn. Dr. Ranzouli is widely recognized and respected for his work with talented and gifted students out of the NEAG School at stores. I have been able to schedule a conversation with him, and like the District Management Council, I want to talk to them about what we've been doing. I want to talk to them about our desire to do better, and I want to see what we can discuss. I expect that in the short near future, I'll be able to come to this board with a proposal. There will be an expense involved. I'm not sure what the review will look like. I know that it will involve observations of what we do in the classroom. I know that it will involve focus groups, survey, talking to parents in the community, as well as administrators, teachers within the school system. And we would hope to get a good, fresh, objective look at what we do, how we could continue to build on what we do well, and how we can improve areas where we need to do better. I don't have a proposal to present at this time. The tentative workshop scheduled for this board, which placed an update on this topic in February, was built to allow us some time to begin to get this conversation with this outside group started. I don't know if we'll have a deliverable by February, but I expect we would at least be able to update this board on how we're taking this look, how it is shaping out, and hopefully having an interim report. So we've put some pieces in place immediately. I know that we continue to service all of our students, and I know that we continue to have high expectations for all of our students. I think that the structure around identification, monitoring, and communicating around these students was one of the biggest frustrations we heard last year. We've worked to address that. And then larger, we don't want to rush to a solution. We want to be able to look at the work that we're doing and thoughtfully move that work forward as we have done in some other areas. That's where we stand today. That's the work that we've been wrestling with as the year has opened. I have received communications in the past several weeks from parents who have been asking for that sort of update. I've been meeting with principals to look at how it's going in the schools this year, and I assume that there may be questions from the board or comments from the public as we move on.
Wondering if there are board questions first, and then we can
Sure.
open it up a little more broadly. But, board members, questions?
I understand the market for accommodations in this area, and it's not quite the same as the study population, or just because there's so much legislation and finance around that.
Special education.
Districts are forced to deal with that legally. However, I do wonder, you know, as we look for things that are out there, it would be helpful to involve some of the parents in the community who are very interested in these issues and at least making sure that we do a thorough search of the available options for that. Because, you know, a couple of the ones you've mentioned, I know are locally available, but I think, you know, in this day and age, you know, there's a consultant for everything. If you look hard enough and you find the right person. And I just would want to make sure that we did a thorough search for the, you know, the best fit for this district if we're going to spend some money on it. So I guess that's my question, is have you thought about putting together maybe sort of a committee or task force to at least investigate those possibilities?
At this point, not yet. At this point, what I have done is I have reached out to other school systems who have done similar work. I know that Weston conducted a similar review some years ago and asked them with whom they worked. I've spoken with Madison about the services that they have in place, and I've gone to what I recognize as local resources. So as I speak to Dr. Ranzouli, as I speak to the representatives from DMC tomorrow, I also sort of, you know, want to ask them what they can offer and ask them who else they know in this area. I think that if I find somebody who has an approach that seems like it could work for us, it would make sense to invite that person to come to a special meeting of the board that we could advertise to the parent group. I know we have a list of the folks who attended that June meeting. We could sort of conduct an open interview. We can have them talk to us about what they're interested in providing. I had not thought previously until you asked the question, Dr. Moore, about the idea of advertising. I mean, I suppose that we could think about putting out a call. Again, it's, I think it's different than the special education component, but I suppose that we could put out a bit of sorts, put out a call to providers who are out there and see what comes up. I have only been working with organizations with whom I'm familiar or that have been recommended to us to date. I had never worked with the Connecticut Coalition previously, but they came highly recommended through Weston, contacted them. I hadn't thought about sort of casting the net more broadly than working the networks and seeing who came recommended.
Just sniffing around, as to the extent I've sniffed around, it seems to me that Ranzouli is the guy in this field, and certainly locally. He is the head of the UConn Center for the Talented and Gifted, I think is what it's called. And it's, you can go to their website, it's gifted.ucon.edu. And they don't seem to do evaluations of local districts. On the other hand, they've got a lot of literature and research about what a good program looks like. It strikes me that if he doesn't, if he can't do it, or somebody within UConn can't do it, if he doesn't know who does it, who would know? This is what he does, this is his area. So I think, I'd be very optimistic about, you're getting information from Dr. Ranzouli about what this would look like, what the standards would be, what the process would be, et cetera. I mean, you're right, there is a consultant for everything. If the guy who runs the UConn school that's nationally recognized, along with UVA, for research in talented and gifted doesn't know who that is, then maybe we send out a want ad. But I think we talked to
Yeah, that's fine. You know, I mean, one that comes to mind, a parent actually referred this person to me, and I had a short conversation with her, is Joyce Fantassel-Baska, who's down at William Mary, who's written extensively on this subject, and she has done consultations for Connecticut schools in the past. And I don't know what else is out there, but it just seems that if we're going to undertake this, that it's worth looking beyond just the Connecticut borders, as good as I'm sure Joe Ranzouli is. I mean, you know, there may be some ideas from people in California or, you know, someplace else that would make sense for this district. And, you know, maybe we end up going with Ranzouli or somebody else that, you know, fits and is local. But I guess my point is, or question is, you know, can we involve? I mean, obviously, this is a big issue for the community. It's been a huge turnout at the workshops that we've offered. There's a lot of people who are very up to speed on what's going on with this stuff and are very interested in it. So, you know, I think you do have a lot of energy that you could tap to look into those resources. So that would, I guess, be a comment or a question.
And just to refresh everybody's recollection, the DMC, the District Management Council that you're going to be talking to
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. They were one of the bidders on our special ed. See, I knew you would remember that. They were one of the bidders. We actually, it was their report in Simsbury
Yes.
that started us down this road with the Futures Report relating to special ed. They wrote an outstanding report in Simsbury. So
Which is credited for turning around special education in Simsbury some years ago.
Right. Oh, it was a brilliant report. So, but again, if they're interested, that's a very viable alternative. Admittedly, Harvard, you know, it's not Yale.
It's not Yale. How many Nobel Prize laureates
Pretty good.
More of the Boston area than if I have an area.
If I am successful in generating interest from more than one of these conversations, I am envisioning the evenings when the building committee met with three or four architectural firms. So depending on whether or not it results in me needing to cajole and call in favors to get someone who's willing to do this, or whether or not we've got two or three organizations that are willing to
Regardless, if we're spending funds on this, we have to put out a bid essentially, right?
No, we can waive it.
Right. Plus, you've got the limit, the bid limit, and then that gets into what your definition of
What's that?
You've got the bid threshold that has to be above in order to go out to bid of $7,500.
My hunch is we're going to be over $7,500.
And one question I have is always in that fiscal responsibility, define what we really need and what we're spending money on.
Yeah.
And if there's limitations of that service is not really out there, then, and you've got, you know, UConn or other pieces you can pull in, what is IFL, University of Pittsburgh, that resources there that we are already in contact with, and we have some contracting things? Is it labor hours that we're missing, so internally we can't do it? Or is it expertise? And do you hire somebody internally to take and do some homework, to pull the program together? Or offer a stipend to somebody else internally to take and do extra work in order to pull stuff together that is better organized?
I think the internal question is actually both right now. I think part of it, and I'll say again, is the capacity in this school year to ask folks to take on a study of this quality. But I also do think that if it's not the idea of expertise, it's at least the idea of fresh eyes. I think we know what we know, and I think we know what we do well. But I think we're looking for some people who may help us to identify what we don't know right now. And so I think that we do want an outside provider. I think we do want somebody who will look at us with more objective and a more critical eye to help us identify areas that we may not be servicing properly or to the best of our ability at this time. So I would, and we thought, we thought long and hard about the idea of doing a self-study. Weston did a very good job with the self-study, and we've pulled all their materials. But I think that it would serve our needs better for a number of reasons right now to try to find that outside provider. And I do think that if I could convince more than one organization or individual to be interested, that the idea of pulling together an evening and asking them to present to us what you can do for us, what can you bring, and then, you know, in a sealed envelope, have the cost of that, and then we make a decision. We can see, you know, where the group has interest, and then we can see which one is fiscally most responsible, bringing somebody from UConn. If we're as excited about them as they are, as we are from groups from, you know, California, well, then we'll weigh the price. If we're wedded to one further away, then it's worth the expenditure. Again, I don't know if I can convince three or four people to be interested enough to go through that sort of process, or whether it's going to be, we'll do it because, we'll do it for Guilford, we'll do it, you know, I don't know. So I'm worried about generating that level of interest.
The option to put out a bid and to go through the process of structuring the RFP in a way that, you know, puts into words what we want, regardless, I think would be a helpful thing. And I think involving both people within the district and the administration, as well as potentially people in the community, to do that would be worthwhile.
There are certainly publications where we would be able to advertise such a bid and see what kind of response we get.
Because I agree. I mean, I think that, I mean, Dr. Freeman, as you spoke about talking to some people who are not sure what we want. I mean, I think that, I think there are enough people who have specific concerns and specific questions that I think if we can approach these groups with specifics ourselves, not how are we doing, and what do we need to do next, but these are specific concerns. This is the data we would be interested in looking at. This is the trajectory that we want to study. I think the more that, and I think there are individuals on the board, and certainly individuals in the community, have probably thought really specifically, whether it's just about their child or the children they know, or kids in general, about what are the things that we really want to know? And how can we get help finding those out? And then have that inform our next steps might be helpful, particularly if, and I'm not as well versed as some of you are, but if in fact it's going to be hard to find a group that can come to us and say, this is what you need to look at, and this is how you need to do it. If we can come to a group and say, this is what we want, can you provide it? We might get further along more quickly.
Those are exactly, I mean, when we met with the Connecticut Coalition, it was a two-hour meeting. The block of time I have scheduled for tomorrow is a two-hour phone call with DMC, similar amount of time with Dr. Ranzouli next week. So that's exactly what we're sort of trying to lay out for them, in a phone conference. Obviously, that's not a public meeting, but if I can generate that kind of interest to have them come back and do that in a public setting, I think that would be a healthy thing to do. I'd be more than open to doing that.
Dr. Goins might be another resource as well, with some other names and connections. We've used him to do our superintendent searches the past two times. So there's some connections out there, not that he wouldn't do the work, but a resource.
You know, I'm sure, you know, you were very aware of the Futures Report from, that came to your attention during the interview process. You know, I think one of the reasons the community is really interested in trying to do a similar type of evaluation here is that, is the feeling that the Futures Report really changed the direction that we were going in, in the special ed area. And that I think special ed parents and regular ed parents really saw the Futures Report as a very, very worthwhile exercise. And I think, I think the hope is that we're going to repeat a similar constructive
Similar, relatable, yep.
Yeah, approach. And so, you know, you've said a few times, and I just, it is your intention to bring to us some kind, something in terms of an outside evaluation?
Absolutely, yes. So let me be really clear. I think that we would benefit from having a set of objective, outside, and critical eyes come and look at how we service our highest achieving students, similar to what we did with the Futures Report. I think because of some reasons that Dr. Moore noted, it's a less common request, and so it is taking a little bit more time to vet that out. If I did a Google search for special education audits, I would have vendors lined up for it. And when I go to the DMC website, it's not a service that they list under service provided. Now, when we spoke to them, they said, absolutely, we'll be happy to talk to you about that. But it's not something they list as a packaged service. I know that there are people out there, and Dr. Ranzouli is one of them, he lives in our backyard. I know that there are people out there that have expertise in this population of students and these instructional approaches. And in fact, Dr. Ranzouli has worked in Guilford before. He worked in the school system prior to my arrival here. So to have somebody, whether it's a Ranzouli or whether it is somebody else, come in is healthy. We got great results out of the Futures Report. I don't think we should be afraid of looking at our programming. And again, we set that February date after some early conversations this summer, I believe, with board members, not in whole, but individually that I had with board members, where we were sort of unpacking the meeting and saying, have we thought about a Futures look in the way that we've done it before? We're very excited about what we've been able to glean from that report and what we've been able to make actionable around special ed. I would love to be here a year from now, being able to report out that we had that much help and that we were able to guide future decisions as much around this population of students.
Other questions, comments on this issue?
We'll keep you informed.
All right. Then why don't we go back to item five on the agenda, public forum for topics on the board agenda can either be related to this or can be related to anything else on the board agenda? Is there anybody who wants to speak? Please. Coming up, I'm going to give your name and, I guess, address. Are we still doing that? Are we requiring that? Seems to be a requirement.
Keith Mitzelfelt, 38 Pepper Bush. First, I just want to say thank you for all the progress being made toward that end, the high-achieving learners and whatnot. I just wanted to, I've got a couple of comments about CCSS, but first, I just wanted to, are we talking about, we showed a triangle when we were at the meeting before, and at the very tip of the triangle, there was gifted and talented, and I heard that word used more than once here tonight. And I'm wondering, are we looking at this consultant for those individuals? Or is it the 20% or, you know, at the, do you follow me?
I do. Speaking for myself, what I would like to see is somebody who could look at the whole continuum for us and give us advice on how we are working from the ground up. Quite honestly, I don't think you can just look at the top 2% or 10% or 50% without looking at the foundation underneath them, otherwise you're building on nothing. So I would like somebody who would help us be able to say your core curriculum, your interventions in the middle for high-achieving students, your accommodations for kids who are, still have capacity, and then specifically, and the identified talented and gifted at the top.
Right, right.
That's the way that we have tried for years now to holistically look at special education on the other end of the continuum. I wouldn't want somebody to come in and say, just look at 2% of our population, and try to do that divorced from everything else that we do and everyone else whom we service.
Okay.
And I was only answering for myself. And I was only answering for myself, so.
Because, because really I think that, you know, throughout that triangle, this all, the study could benefit students at every level in that. And I think that since Common Core is so new to, you know, to everybody really, but to, to our district and stuff like that, it seems to me a great time to try to get that going and make that the norm here in Guilford. A couple of observations about Common Core, just because I'm not sure what kind of feedback you're getting and I just want to make sure you're getting some. I have to say, I was pretty skeptical of it at first and, but I gave it a chance and my kids are doing pretty well with it. I can see the benefits of, of that approach with, there's, there's kind of a lot of, I'm going to speak first of all about math. We were talking a lot about math in the meeting before. There's a lot of writing involved in that. I do think the kids have a deeper understanding certainly than I probably did when I went through it. Two concerns though, I think that, that writing and the language part of that in the math, I'm afraid that it might crowd out the actual doing of math, the, the practice, the rigor, if you will. And, and something that goes along with that, the, the kids are basically, the teachers are having to take things off websites and there, there's no workbook or anything like that. It, it gives the impression that it's kind of a shoot for the hip, from the hip at, at the moment because my understanding is the Smarter Balance test hasn't been finalized so the, the people that make textbooks can't finish their textbooks because they want to make sure it covers that kind of stuff. And, and so we have no textbooks. The teachers are doing their best and, and sometimes even one of my kids in math, the teacher is making her own materials. I don't know where she finds time for that, but that's a huge effort. And I guess my concern is moving forward, I'd like to see that kind of thing supported a little better. I know we're new and everything, but, you know, okay, I think I've said enough about that. Anyway, question, is the Smarter Balance, will that happen in the spring, this coming spring?
I'll be reporting on that. It's not on my report, but I was going to touch on that in the balance of my report.
Well, might as well do it now, you know, as long as we're talking about.
The guidance that we have received from the state is that each district will be selecting, and our, our response form is due on October 18th, whether we will be participating in a legacy test for English Language Arts and Math Areas, or what, which would be the CMT and the CAPT, or whether we will be participating in the Smarter Balance assessment in the Language Arts and Math Areas. We will be requesting participation in the Smarter Balance assessment. I see no logic in holding on to a legacy test that does no, that no longer aligns with, with the standards that we are, that we're approaching. We will be required to continue with science assessment as it is currently done in CMT and CAPT. The state is putting together a waiver for, to the federal government to allow us to receive a waiver from those requirements and to waive our use of those state-level assessments in our teacher evaluation systems. We will make our request. We will not receive word from the state until they, after they have received word from the federal government, which will be fairly deep into the school year. So we have been advised to proceed as if we will be administering the tests that we select. That is all a long answer to say, we expect to be administering Smarter Balance assessments to all students in grades three through eight and 11 this year in the areas of English Language Arts and Mathematics. We will be notified of a window. We don't know when that window notification will be. We don't know if it will compete with the regular March window for science assessment. We don't know if it might overlap with our April vacation, but we will wait. And so when you talk about some things being in flux and, and developing materials and searching for materials, yes, we are working on being as well-informed and, and as current as we can be with the information that, that we are following. We're, we're taking everything that we receive from Hartford and trying to plan for that and respond to that as well as we can. And in fact, we continue to, to voice our support when appropriate, our concern and our questions when appropriate in Hartford and with our federal team. I, I have met with Representative DeLoro, I have met with Representative Courtney, I have met with Senator Myers. We, we are working at both levels to try to get as much clarification and advance notice as we can. We expect to be in Smarter Balance this year and I will be informing the board that we will also be requesting not to use that in any of our teacher or administrator evaluations this year. We will only be using local, non-standardized measures as we launch the new evaluation processes for teachers and administrators this year and may have to amend our local plan with the state to make that viable. That was a long answer.
Oh, yeah. Because, I mean, they're not supportive right, right now, so that, that's, yeah, it's kind of a tough.
We're waiting for the federal government to do anything. We may be waiting for.
The waiver that we need to submit as a state will be submitted to a federal department that is currently closed.
Well, I'm sure they'll get right to it when they reopen.
One last thing about writing, and you know, this might be too down in the weeds for, for this board, but one of the things we, we saw over and over again as the kids were going through K through four, I, my kids are in seventh and eighth now, moving through K through four and fifth and sixth, was that they were always asking for elaboration, elaboration, you know, just put more words on the paper and, and that will get you a better grade. With the Common Core now, it seems to me that what we're probably after is a more concise answer and exact.
I can tell you my experience with it. I mean, to the extent that, I mean, I know what you're saying about, it's, it's odd or maybe even jarring to have literacy in the math assignment, right? You know, and, but, but it's actually kind of interesting. It's, it's solve the problem, but then explain why, how you solved it and explain why it's the right answer. And it's, it's fascinating. I've never, we never did that, or I never did anyway when I was in school. It was, and it's, you know, I think that the focus of it is though, that if they are following instructions and the, and the papers are being graded correctly, then the, the goal is to answer the question. It's not to just keep writing. And, and I have some personal experience with, with the, that at least a teacher at Adams is doing exactly what she's supposed to be doing with respect to that, from the way she's been grading my girls' papers. So, so I, I'm, it's intriguing. You know, it's a little, it's, you have to maybe take a step back and, you know, what, what is this all about? But we've talked about it in terms of the interconnection between, you know, there are not very many jobs where you have to use, where you use mathematics in isolation with no other skill that you would learn in a, in an educational setting. So if you, you may know what the answer is, but if you can't explain it and convey the basis for the answer to somebody else, then it's not that valuable.
Right. No, I get that and, and I'm, I'm not, I support it, honestly. I think it's a good thing. I'm just saying that the emphasis in the past, under the old way that we used to do things, was to try to use more words and try to, you know, just put more words on the paper, whereas it seems like now it would be better to, to, to get to the point in as few words as possible. I mean, that, to me, that would.
I don't, I don't want to get too far afield, but you know how much I enjoy talking about this.
It is the word of education, remember?
And I do want to be careful to say that this is a difference in how writing has been assessed. It is not the way that we've ever approached the teaching of it in Guilford. But on the CMT and on the CAPT, when a student is writing a response, they have in fact, we have been advised by the test, by the, the assessment designers, we're looking to see your ability to make an argument. So just make up the facts and figures and show us how you would make this argument and it's okay to make up any of the details, any of the numbers, any of the facts. So when you were given a writing prompt on the CMT or the CAPT.
Is this under ethics?
No, this, you know what this is? This is a test to qualify you for serving in Congress.
The tips that go along with the Smarter Balance are all about going back to the source. So whether it is how we're approaching it in the classroom or how it will be assessed this time, a writing prompt will not be given divorced from actual data that can be gleaned from real sources. So the students are asked to explain or make this argument and you have to cite facts and figures, but they've got to be real facts and figures from the palette of sources that you have been given. We talk about staying within the four corners of the page. Some of the activities that we put this board through early on, going back to a piece of writing and pulling the information from that writing and then building your response from that actual information, which Mr. Blas also goes back to some of the, the principles around this, about, about getting students to be both college and career ready. It is unusual to find a profession where you are supposed to make an argument that is completely in the abstract, so much in the abstract that you can make up the facts. Yeah, that is a rare profession. Most professions ask you to build on a real data set and that's what we have, that is one of the shifts built into the, the Common Core in both math and in the English Language Arts areas.
In previous decades, a four-letter word was a snow job. I think is that what Keith is referring to?
Thanks.
More words, just plus to the paper.
And in Dr. Myers's absence, I'll also raise that Mr. Masenti continues to explore the International Baccalaureate Program at the high school. I know there's a, a field trip, as it were, to Northport High School in Long Island on Thursday to get a, where several administrators and teachers are going to get a presentation on how that program works. So that, that is another very exciting issue that I'm sure Dr. Myers, when he gets back, will be happy to know that we've got it implemented in, in place. Yes. So other, other questions, comments from the public on any agenda item?
My name's Marion Breeze, 42 Arrowhead Drive, and I am not here to talk about the black box. I actually wanted to first commend Dr. Freeman and the administration for being brave enough to move forward with the math curriculum in a way that was risky because a lot of parents have seen that the Adams scores in particular at seventh grade have gone down over the last couple of years. But my understanding is that that's due in part to the teachers being asked to change the curriculum and move forward and look at this as an opportunity to move ahead and, and change the curriculum so that it will meet the new standards rather than continuing to teach the old curriculum and just continue to do well on an old test. I would also support your decision, if at all possible, to move forward with the Smarter Balance assessment. It just makes sense to be more progressive. I just wanted to voice a couple of concerns. Whatever changes you make, I will say first and foremost, aren't going to affect my kids personally. I have a junior in high school and an eighth grader, so they're sort of out of a lot of the, the decisions that you will make moving forward. But as you look at evaluating the programs, either, you know, at, at the elementary school level or at the middle school level, I would urge you to also look at the work that you send home over the summer. And that's something that's easy to ignore, something easy to sort of forget about. And I can only speak to my, my children's personal experience, but I'll give you an example. Last summer, my son, or last year, my son was in seventh grade. He was told that, that, that class was a very special class and that they were basically going to be doing two years' worth of math in one year because the school was switching over to this new approach with seventh and eighth grade math in Adams. However, the summer work that he was given, it was a pretty thick packet, was the exact same summer packet that the, the regular class got. So it wasn't any different, even though he had supposedly worked and done two years of work in an advanced math program. It was the exact same summer work that the rest of the seventh grade got. So we never really got a clear understanding of how that could be or why that would be. But I would just urge you that in any evaluative process, make sure that the work that you're sending home, whether it's homework or in the classroom or summer work, is truly valuable to the student's experience. I would also urge you as part of the evaluative process to not just include the parents who are here, but the parents who have elected to send their children to private school. I've engaged with several of them and I can just tell you anecdotally, many of those parents would rather send their children to the Guilford schools. There are some that no matter what, they feel that their children are best served in the, in the private school systems. But there are many parents who would like to bring their children back into the Guilford Public Schools, whether into high school or into middle school or even at the elementary school level. So in any part of the evaluative process, please consider finding a way to create focus groups that include many members of the community, including alumni, as I said, parents who have sent their children into private school, as well as parents of young children and parents of children who are in the high school who may not have a personal vested interest in the elementary program, but may have some valuable perspective. So, and I also urge you to do, to keep this on the agenda. If you, I appreciate that it's on the agenda for February, but if there isn't an update monthly, parents are going to get discouraged. They're going to feel like this is something that's getting put on the back burner. It's really important. You have a very active community and frankly, some of these parents are on the fence and I would hate to lose them as active participants in the Guilford Public School System because they're deciding to now send their children into the private school system. And I think that you will have stronger advocates for Guilford Public Schools now and in the future if you continue to keep this conversation alive. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions on an agenda items? Please.
Hi, my name is Robyn Ganzemmi and I live at 1500 Jennifer's Drive. And I would love to be a part of whatever committee that you come up with. As a resident, I'm also a civil engineer and I was teaching until just recently engineering courses to high school students in East Haven. So I kind of have a mix of different background. I just have a couple of things that I wanted to bring up. The first thing is communication between the school district and the parents. And I just wish that I was more well-informed. Like I think my daughter is a high achiever, she's done very well on all the CMT exams. She won the Guilford Fair spelling bee the last three years, you know, over and over. She's in the accelerated math program and she's a sixth grader, but I feel like there's a lack of communication between the school district and the parents. So that was one thing I wanted to bring up. And another thing I wanted to talk about was STEM education at the elementary level and the middle school level. I would love to see more STEM curriculum enrichment at that lower level to get the kids excited about that, especially girls. I mean, you never can get the girls excited about math and science and STEM. And if you catch them young, then you can foster that as they get older. I was looking at the high school course listing and it's all under tech ed next to auto mechanics and woodshop. Like you're never going to get the girls to get into that if you don't put it like in sciences. So anyway, those are just a couple of things that I wanted to comment on about and I would love to help, whatever I can do to help get this program rolling or give my input, research, whatever, I would love to participate because I know it's a tough job. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else at this point? Item six on the agenda is communications. We did receive several, I know everybody received emails regarding some of the things we've been talking about tonight and, and, you know, I guess once the minutes are prepared, we can let people know what, what we discussed here this evening and bring people up to speed. All right. Any other communications that anybody got? Okay. Item seven, we've already done. Item eight, 8.1, you want to tell us how the enrollment is doing?
Yes. You have enrollment figures in your packet this evening. I want to thank Dr. Moore because we've used again the format that he put together last year. What you'll see, if you look through, is you will see a breakdown by grade level and then it gives you a comparison by school. In the broadest terms, at the elementary level, we do not have any grade level with In the broadest terms, at the elementary level, we do not have any grade level with an average class size that reaches 20. Our elementary schools have average class sizes at each grade level that are no higher than 19. We do have some sections, obviously, that spike, and we do have some disparity. The largest difference being a difference in class size from 15 or 16 in one school and 21 in another. Again, if we had all of our elementary students centralized in one large elementary school with 16 classes per grade, we would be able to average those perfectly, but when you have the disparities of neighborhood, and you end up with some peaks. But if you look large across the school district, class sizes throughout the elementary level that remain in the teens are the target that we want to continue looking at. And if we can level better, then that is a goal to continue working towards. At the middle level, you continue to see an enrollment bubble moving through Baldwin. It'll begin to move into Adams next year, and that is the largest class size average that we have, when we took 25 in the sixth grade at Baldwin this year. How it's the same size and the same distribution that we saw in the fifth grade last year moving forward. We do not have the high school enrollment figures broken out in this format for you, as that is difficult to do with the way high school classes load, but we did give you our study. And in fact, what's most worth noting on the study, I believe, is that we are coming to the end of it. And so I do believe that we need to think about whether or not we want to engage an enrollment study extending out. The study ends this year. We will not have an objective enrollment projection. This was put together essentially for the building project, but it does show our overall projections, and other than being able to roll our numbers up locally, we won't have an in-depth study, and so it is something that we want to start thinking about. The overall picture is that our enrollment is down approximately 60 students this year, and that is exactly what we did project. We have come in where we expected to be. We did not make staffing cuts as a result of that. Remember that we're down 66 students. A simple math could suggest that that's three classes, if you just said your class sizes are 20, and so you should have reduced three teaching positions. But when you spread that reduction across seven locations and 13 grade levels, remembering the special ed services that we brought back to district, I do want to note that while our enrollment was down as projected, we in fact increased staffing to some degree this year. Our certified staffing increased a little bit in the areas of special education, because we did bring those services back to school that we had previously sent students out of district to receive. This is a for your information item, there's no action necessary here.
I mean, it seems to me, just, you know, anecdotally, it seems like our decline is much less than some comparable districts. I know Madison, for example, had a much more significant decline in enrollment. Am I wrong about that?
Yeah, no, you're exactly right. We maintained a level better than some of our neighbors and comparable dirt bees. It's hard to figure out why that may have happened.
Can I just ask, I mean, overall, I think it looks very good and consistent. The one that kind of jumps out is the grade six Baldwin, 2012, 2013, 14 teachers, 267 students. Then for 2013, 2014, we dropped two teachers, even though the number of students went up to 300, so the ratio is 25, which seems high. Can you explain why we dropped those two teachers, or what, how did that work?
There was a restructuring of the teams at Baldwin. It was a result of some retirement. We knew that it would be high this year, but as we look at the numbers that extend down into the elementary, we knew that it would be a one-year bubble. We wanted to be cautious about replacing those positions, and then needing to lay people off in future years because of the dropping enrollment. So there was a lot of conversation about what it would mean to maintain those numbers this year, but we felt that it was reasonable. We're also looking, with the coaching model, to changing the way that we do remedial support at Baldwin, and so we have left remedial pullout supports in place. So while those class averages are 25, there are at times students who are removed from that class to receive remedial service. So the classroom teacher might have 25 on the books, but might not necessarily have 25 in front of her on an average day, as two or three might be pulled out of the math class for remedial support. Two or threes might be pulled out of the reading class for reading support. We're looking at changing that structure, and we'll wait until next year so that we don't have that compounded enrollment impact.
Could you request out of the State Department of Education what their demographic projections are, what they have done or not done?
We have not. The survey that you have was an outside contract evaluation?
Right, I know, but the state has some numbers, and again, it'd be interesting to get what they have, and looking forward to say. It is interesting with the economic changes that's been placed in past several years, what that does, what the average house size, you know, in Madison, the per capita income, and whether the stability in Madison and the lack of turnover in households means that, you know, people move through, but they're not, you know, selling out compared to Guilford having a little bit more affordable housing in Madison, for example, in some people's minds, anyway, how that impacts people's decisions of, you know, moving in and out, coupled with job changes.
I have not. I did want to draw it to your attention tonight that the study ends, but I have not thought about whether we-
So how helpful is that to you? I mean, it's actually pretty remarkable how accurate they were. If you look at the last number, right?
Pretty close.
34.68 is within almost 50 students.
They were spot on.
Which is, and when year was the study done?
Was it 8.9 that it was commissioned? I don't recall. It was before my time. It goes back to 8.9.
I'm sorry, what goes back to 8.9?
Well, their data goes back to 8.9, but I don't-
Oh, the HC Planning Consultants, I mean, it was before-
It's like 2007.
Or six, or five even, I want to say.
I think this is one of these areas where time is flying.
That's pretty remarkable, they're eight years prior. Do you know how much we paid for that?
No, I'd need to go back and look.
It wasn't a lot.
Yeah, but I mean, I guess if we're thinking about doing this again, now's the time to think about it.
And they were projecting eligibility. Why births hadn't even taken place, as far as, and where a kindergarten are coming in, and they were having, you know, numbers to-
Yeah, and this is, actually raises a really interesting, you know, a point that we all need to keep in mind. The state data on what is happening to enrollments statewide is not necessarily compelling data. I mean, Dr. Balistraci could explain this better than me, but it is not necessarily compelling data on what is likely to happen in Guilford, with Guilford enrollments. You know, obviously, I think you're right, Dr. Moore, the last, the study hit it really close, whenever it was 10 years ago, I guess. So, you know, it may be time to take a look at that, if it would be helpful for you. Now, one of the reasons we were doing that at the time was trying to figure out facilities, needs, and what we were going to need moving forward, and it sounds like we're still in good shape on that. We hit it correctly. So is it helpful for you to have a prediction on what future enrollment is, or do you kind of, we have to, if they show up, we have to take care of it, so.
It is, you know, it is comforting to have a second look at something, and to be able to say, you know, we can roll the numbers forward, and how does that then jive with what this outside study was? I don't know how essential it is, and so my comment tonight was intended to be sort of a tickler, so that as we go back and price it out, and talk about whether or not it's worth going forward, that we get to have that same conversation with all of you. It's helpful, I don't know how helpful it is, it's hard to quantify. We can always roll the numbers forward, and we, but at some point, I expect that our kindergarten numbers are going to rebound. They've been dropping and dropping and dropping, and how long will that continue? Again, this would be a place where we would want to put out a bid, we'd want to look at who responds, we'd want to question those different firms, and ask them about what their, what their process is. I don't know how this was put together, but like you, I look at it, and I'm surprised at how accurate it is.
I mean, there's a fairly thick packet, and I think there was three different cohorts of things that they looked at, that then were melded together, I remember the details, but in Bill's earlier comments of my wanting to look out farther ahead as a board member, you know, we have several things going on the communities have to be aware of. We're talking about all-day kindergarten. You take and do that, and then you turn around and having a classroom functionality change, and then a larger flux coming in will then take and need more classroom space, and do you have that classroom space, you need to be looking at what additions, changes to school facilities might look at in five years. In 2000, we had the, or 2003, we had the defeat of a middle school proposal. That concept, I think, is still a very valid one for this town to embrace, and it's not the capital timing for that type of dollars, but on the other hand, thinking about what the Adams Middle School Baldwin campus potential is, is another aspect of it, and reorganization of district rates would all go into having numbers that come out of such a study to be accurate and valid for the time period when you want those to be valid for.
I think it's a good thing to have in the file, and, you know, what the dollar value associated that, with that is, is something that's worth, you know, doing the cost benefit.
All right, let's just keep that in mind, then, as we're working to the budget. Okay.
Just find out, I mean, I know it's five years or more ago, but how, just ballpark what that costs.
We didn't look up what that was.
It wasn't a lot.
I was taking, you know, five to $10,000 item, but-
I might be right.
Yep, we can get that for you.
It's in that range, I mean.
Convert it to today's dollars, but it'll give us a starting point. And if I may, the one other item that I did want to bring to your attention, and I apologize it was not on the agenda under my report. On Friday, I did participate in a conference call with the commissioner, who was updating us on our status with evaluation. Where we stand currently, this board has approved a locally constructed plan that we put together within the school district. There has continued to be conversation over the summer, and there's been a clarification that the local committee that participated in forming these district plans needed to involve teacher participants, and in fact, the clarification is that the teacher participants needed to have been selected by the local bargaining agency on the teacher's behalf, not handpicked by the board or by the administration to participate in that process. It has been suggested that if the plan was approved by the board, and that that was not the committee that put the plan together, that the board should reapprove. So I want to assure this committee, this board, that the committee that worked on our plan was more than half teacher participants. The other half was made up of building-level, central office-level administrations and a board representative, and of those teachers, the majority of them were selected by the GEA. We offered the invitation, we asked them to bring members to the table to participate. So we have fulfilled that requirement, even though it is a new requirement and our committee's work is done. Moving on, I let the board know that we will be expected to select the test, the assessment in which we want to participate. I believe I heard board endorsement for selecting the Smarter Balance assessment moving forward, and thank you, I see no value in staying with the legacy tests. But it's also been suggested that we want to look carefully at our plans, and make sure that our plans recognize now the lack of a state test on which we would be able to build teacher evaluation. Forty-five percent of the teacher evaluation is intended to be built upon measurable data, looking at how our students did at some point in the past, and then measuring how our students did at the end of this school year. And I can see that as a teacher, my value add can be seen here, because my students tested at this level on a previous assessment, and at this level on the next assessment, pre- and post-assessment. If we're going to move to Smarter Balance at the end of this year, sometime, within a window at the end of this year, we have been told that the results will be delivered to us late, in fact, really late, so we won't have those results to look at. We're not going to be able to use those assessments. So it has been suggested that we should go back and amend our plan to not refer to state assessments this year. Our plan, in fact, refers to using state assessments in areas that are tested when available. We were thinking about our second-grade teachers, we were thinking about music and art teachers who don't necessarily contribute directly to the math section of the CMT. And so our language said that anybody who contributes to those tests at those grade levels would use those assessments when available. I don't think that it's necessary to go back and amend our plan to specifically say that we're not going to use a state assessment this year, and then have to go back and amend. We didn't name Smarter Balance, we said the Connecticut State Assessment, whether it's CMT or Smarter Balance, and when it's appropriate, we will use that. I do think that it would be prudent, however, or I thought that it would be prudent, however, to bring it to your attention, and I don't know that the board needs to have a motion on it, but I would want to ask if the board recognizes, or I want to make sure that the board recognizes, that we won't be using any state standardized assessment in our summative evaluations for teachers this year, and by extension for administrators. Just as we can't measure one classroom of students, we will not have SPIs, School Performance Indices, which were created and rolled out for the first time last year, but now they won't be available this year because we're changing the assessment. So a principal won't be able to look and say that my overall SPI was 91 last year, and this year it's 92, therefore I moved my school in the right direction, and my value add as a leader can be seen in that growth. I think that as long as our report is written in the, our plan is written in the way that it's written, and that we can point to minutes in which, in which it shows that the board was made aware that there will be no state assessments used for measuring teacher or administrator performance this year, and we agreed that we would move forward, I think we're covered. I don't think we need to pull the plan, rewrite that one section, and resub, bring it back to this board for approval, and then resubmit it. I think that it's logical, that if there's no assessment connected to baseline data, you can't have two points of measure, and our plan is written broadly enough to recognize that, and I've said it specifically enough with this board tonight, that there's no misunderstanding around that topic.
So is there going to be any objective data, other than, well, obviously not the state assessment, but is there going to be some objective data to be, that would be used in the teacher evaluation process, like a local evaluation?
Yes.
Or a local test?
Yes, we will be able to use local benchmarks, we will be able to continue to use assessments that teachers have availed themselves of in the past, like DRAs, direct reading assessments. Right now, we have at Baldwin and Adam, writing prompts that are being issued on common rubrics to the entire school, so we will have a school-wide pre-assessment on this writing prompt given in October, and then in May, when we reissue another writing prompt and do the schoolwide. So you will have a pre- and a post-assessment, but they're recognized as local and not standardized, because we don't have a standardized measure that's been tested for validity and reliability, and is administered across the state to a large population.
Does the plan allow us to use that data?
Yes. Originally, our plan says that 22.5% of a teacher's four-point rating will be made up of local, non-standardized measures. The other 22.5% of the 45% that is based on student growth has to be state standardized assessments where available. They're not available for anyone this year, so we simply won't apply that measure to anyone. Everyone will be measured by non-standardized or local data, or a combination thereof. And remember, teachers self-select those measures. All this September and into October, principals are working with their teachers and with student data in a way that is different than we've done in the past. We're looking at what we have, we're unpacking that data, we're still looking at the CMT, there's still some usable data in there, and we're getting an idea of where our kids are. From that information, we are writing our individual goals for student-learner outcomes. People are talking about slows all over the district this year, our student-learner outcomes, and those student-learner outcomes need to be measured by IAGDs, Individual Growth Terminaries, yeah, it's, measures of individual academic growth.
Where's Dr. Keen when you need him?
Yeah, I know. I wrote that one. We borrowed the state terminology there. So you want to be able to say broadly, our students are going to do better in writing arguments this year, connecting to real datasets from real sources. We're going to measure that growth by giving a pre-assessment on a prompt in October, and giving a post-assessment with a similar prompt in May, and in fact, individual teachers aren't scoring their own kids, we're swipping, swatching the papers up, we're having different teachers deep grade different teachers' classroom sets, we're having two evaluators grade each, so that we get an objective measure, and that's how we're measuring this year. In years to come, we will have both last year's and this year's Smarter Balance assessment, we will have interim assessments. Smarter Balance is giving us interim assessment items that we can use mid-year to check on how students are going. So we're building our ability to use data to measure that, but it's not the actual data that we'll be using four years from today, when we have a baseline and some history with this assessment. We used to be able to put up a chart that showed you how we were tracking in our performance over 10 years of CMT data. We're starting fresh. We're going back to a blank graph, and we need to start building that graph with just the collection of baseline data this year.
It's a moving target. You've done a great job, I think, of just keeping us in the loop of, of all the plans, so I have no problem with, since it's not available, not using it this year.
Does anybody think we should approach it differently?
No, I mean, the other thing, too, is that if a teacher of a fifth-grade class this year is using her student's CMT scores from last year, is that correct? What's the baseline?
There is no baseline, so she can only use those to sort of say, I see a weakness in this area, and I'd like to target that area, but I have to come up with two different ways to determine whether I've made any growth, because you had, you had that as the baseline, but you, you might have had that to rely on as a pre, but you won't have any comparable post to be able to compare it to.
Well, I guess my point is, we have, we have 12, if you have kindergarten, 13 years, 13 grades of kids, those state tests are only going to apply to five of them, anyway.
Right, it's only three through eight. Right, it's only three through eight.
Because you've got sophomores who are not taking it, the CAP, more than once.
Mm-hmm.
Would you smarter balance, I mean, so I guess adding to the argument of not pulling an evaluation document back, rewriting it, sending it in, and then pulling it back again next year, I just think doesn't make sense.
No, and I've received two requests today from superintendents in other school districts saying, send us the language that you were making so much noise about on Friday, because as they're looking, you know, it sort of goes back to the idea of the electronic communication policy that we had that specifically named beepers. You know, we want to try to not, we didn't name any specific test. I don't know if it'll be Smarter Balance four or five years from now. So we tried to say, thus state-approved standardized assessment, when available, will be required from every teacher who contributes to that. This year it's available for nobody, although people will be contributing to the baseline. If you teach language arts or math in grades three through eight or 11, you'll be contributing to the baseline. You're right, the CAP could never be used as a pre- and post-for student growth, and we need to remember that at times we have used this data inappropriately. When a teacher has said, last year I got 99, or, you know, last year I got 92 to goal on my CAP, this year I got 93 to goal on my CAP, that's not a valid comparison, they're different kids. So yes, you could say, my score went up or my score went down, but you're measuring a whole different population coming through you, and that was never the way it was intended to be delivered. Now, in aggregate, you could look and say, overall, we're trending down, so does that raise curricular concerns? Does that raise instructional concerns? But you really shouldn't be measuring an individual teacher performance based on two different cohorts. That's not what we want to say.
Part of the assessment, there is some, I forget what bucket it's put in, but the survey assessment that goes out to the parents of the children, is that right?
Yes, sort of. There is, within the teacher plan, there is 10 percent of every teacher's evaluation that is based on a goal that is informed by community surveys that are done. So there was some misinterpretation as this was rolled out, that parents were going to receive a survey that said, how did Mr. Freeman do this year? And I was going to be able to fill out that survey, and that would become part of a teacher's evaluation. What happens is that each year, each school will conduct a survey of either their students or their parent population, staff population as well, it's dependent on age of students. From that survey, the staff looks at those survey results and says, our parents want us to improve communication, we need to be communicating better. So then, as a building and as individuals, you write goals to that information. I'm going to write a classroom newsletter every month, or I'm going to do better to post my grades. I'm going to do something to meet that identified need that our community, and then, at the end of the year, when you resurvey, can we show that we've improved parent satisfaction around communication over three or four years conducting these surveys? So that, your performance on that goal makes up 10 percent of your overall evaluation, and that goal has to tie to data that you gleaned from that parent or staff survey. Principals have to respond to the staff.
Do we have a parent survey, or are we developing one?
We conducted one last year, and it essentially was only the state's climate survey. The state had given us the Safe School Climate Survey that we were conducting. The Safe School Climate Survey was written to be a tool that informed us about bullying and an emotionally safe environment in the schools. I believe the survey was misinterpreted by a number of participants last year, because it was administered in January. And I think that after the events of December 14th, people read questions about, do you feel safe in your school environment? And weren't focusing on bullies, they were focused on physical safety in the schools. We're revising that for this year, and we're combining it with, I think, a broader school climate survey, and a tool that responds more to the administration of the school, how the school is being administered, but also communication, information exchange, and we're drawing sample surveys that the state contracted for us to use, as well as looking at what some other school districts did. So again, this year, we'll have a different survey than we did last year. You won't be able to compare baseline to baseline, but we'll start a better baseline this year with a different survey. And we had talked about that in the committee, that we used what we had last year, and this year, we're going to do a better job with that.
And that will go out in January?
Yes, I expect that that'll go out in January of this year. And remember, only a third of the teaching staff is participating this year. Next year will be the year that we roll all 100 percent of our certified teaching staff into this new evaluation plan.
Yeah, I guess I was just interested in the survey that goes out to the parents, and seeing if maybe there can be at least a run past the board in terms of what's being asked at some point where, if there was input on that survey, that we could at least, you know, provide some input on it.
Sure.
I'd be happy to.
Okay, anything else under your report?
No, that exhausts my report.
All right. Well, there's always next one. The item 9.1 on the agenda is to review and ratify a personnel item. The appointment of Joel Morrow as a teacher in grade five at Baldwin Middle School, is there a motion to ratify that appointment?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Quick question, is that is for a temporary one, is that for a leave for teachers, so it's one year assignment?
One year assignment for.
For a leave, okay. Thank you.
So all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Okay. 9.2 is to act on submission of a consolidated grants application. This is our federal, our two federal, pathetic two federal grants. Language arts now, two pathetic federal grants. Elementary and Secondary Education Act grants, Title I is $172,010 for literacy intervention, and Title II, Part A, is to increase student achievement through strategies such as improving teacher and principal quality, which we're going to use to, by employing, by employing the math specialist in part, and also literacy intervention for students performing before grade level expectations. So this is, these are our two federal grants we have to move as a board to submit the consolidated grant. So is there a motion that we submit a consolidated grant application in the amount of $243,113?
So moved. Second.
Any questions? The rhetorical question gets to be, the paperwork et cetera that goes along with it, of how much that is a burden if we're to take and do the right thing and not take their money.
Dr. Keen does put a significant amount of time into the paperwork, however, she is a practiced hand at it, and I would say that it is worth the, it is worth our time to continue to draw these funds into the school district. And she apologizes for her absence tonight and not being here to answer questions for you.
Is there any substantial difference between what we're applying for this year and what we applied for last year?
No, really, we only identify how we will expend these funds. Title I is calculated on your percentage of free and reduced lunch students, it is a, it's, it's an annual approval from you, and it is an entitlement grant. They look at our numbers, they tell us what we receive, and we simply tell them how we will direct the funds to make sure that they are being expended in compliance with the requirements.
And does the sequester affect this at all, or which part of the federal grants that we get does the sequester affect?
The sequester affected us by approximately $80,000 this year. We will need to absorb that out of this year's operating budget. There was a worksheet to calculate what areas that we were affected in. I don't remember exactly the dollar amounts or in what areas, the total was $80,000.
It's not these grants?
The IDA grants were reduced by about $80,000, they were 5 percent, 4.6 percent of each of the two IDA grants, which are special education grants.
Not these two. Okay, thank you.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, and we didn't vote on it yet, right? Is all in favor of the submission of the grant application?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay. 9.3 is actually a piece of good news, and something that we promised back in the spring that we hoped we would be able to do, and we are going to tonight act on that and show that we think we can do it. And that is specifically in adopting, after we adopted the budget last year, and it was approved at referendum, we finalized a plan where we hoped we would be able to bring in a substantial number of outplaced children back into the district and replace student outplacement checks written effectively to out-of-town service providers for special, some special education students with resources in-house. That the expectation was that we were going to be at least able to not, to bring people back into the district at the same or less expense than what we had, than we had budgeted for. The, as we talked in the finance committee meeting this evening, it is, the administration is now confident that we can actually make that formal budget transfer, moving $331,954 out of the private school outplacements for special education into staff salaries in district, mostly, half a position into high school, and that's the coordinator, as I recall, and the rest in teaching positions. So this is a, in the finance committee meeting, we talked about that there are 10 children now that have been brought back in district approximately, and that is a tremendous accomplishment, and it's good for everybody. We said this six months ago, it was going to be good for everybody, and in fact, it is turning out to be good for everybody. We're able to keep our dollars in district, we will see whether there is some more savings, but at a minimum, I think the administration is confident that we're not, that we are going to be able to replace that amount of private tuition money with staff to deliver services in district, which I think everybody wants. The parents want, children want, and the administration certainly wants. So, that's excellent. We're glad that it panned out the way that we thought it was going to pan out, and maybe even better. So is there a motion that we transfer in the budget $331,154 from tuition outplacements into salaries in the amounts listed, or the particular spots listed in the exhibit?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any other questions or comments?
So the transportation costs, is that, that would be in a separate?
It's in a separate line. There will be an effect on transportation.
Yes, there would be, there would be transportation savings as well, because these students will be, these students might require transportation even locally within the school system. Some will be able to ride the regular buses, but either way, it would be a reduction, because it's more local than what we have done before. We are going to continue to watch those related lines, as well as the tuition line, and there may very well be balances in those lines. The purpose of this transfer is to cover the increase in the staffing lines. It may not represent the complete reduction in tuition, but it does cover the increase that we came to you in late June. These positions represented here were increases over the budget that was proposed. It is within the budget number, but we needed to reduce tuition in order to cover the cost of the added teaching positions and half administrator positions.
Yeah, and we are going to have to, you know, if this year, we actually do not have an over expenditure in the outplacement tuition line, it'll be the first year in many, many, many years. So I think the administration's trying to be conservative at this point, but there are some possible cost savings, that's right, there are.
Yes, exactly.
And we're going to continue to monitor those, and we're only six, whatever, six, eight, six, seven weeks into the school year, so we do need to get some more done, and somebody could move into the district tomorrow, and that changes the numbers. So we're just going to have to continue to monitor that, but again, just, you know, excellent, excellent accomplishment so far.
I do want to note, Mrs. Brown also could not be here tonight because of a family obligation, but I did want to note, that significant credit for that work goes to Mrs. Virginia Brown and her special education team. Jason Scanziano at the high school, Mary Ann Martino at the middle level, Heather Gieske, who joins us new to the elementary level, but also to the principals and the teachers and the support staff, who are bringing these students back to Guilford and helping in the transition and supporting them as they are working through every day, and so far, in all early reports, coming back to us very successfully, doing well themselves, enriching our community. And I just want to applaud everybody who has been part of this work. It is a significant milestone, and we are happy to bring it forward tonight and ask for your approval. Could you vote on it? And thank you for your approval.
It'll be approved already.
No, we didn't vote.
I was wrong.
There could be some dissent coming. All right, motion has been made, though, and seconded, that's for all. So all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, terrific.
Thank you very much.
All right, 9.4, we have been asked to approve a donation in the amount of $5,205 from the Guilford Rotary Club to be used for the Guilford High School Interact Club. You do have an exhibit in that, is there a motion that we approve that donation?
So moved.
Second.
With thanks.
All in favor?
Great thanks. I abstain. I think I signed the check.
Oh, is that right, the Rotary Club check? Well, thank you. Very good. And so, what is it going to be used for with the Interact Club, do you know?
The group designates local organizations.
Okay. Do you know, do you have any idea what they're?
Not in specific, I could ask Mr. Masenti or members of the club to give you a more detailed, but it is, it's students who identify other organizations or important functions throughout the community, and they support that. It's a community group within the school, I'd need Mr. Masenti to help.
Maybe, maybe we can just get some, some update from Mr. Masenti about how they're going to use that, just for information.
Large part of this money came from a golf event that the Rotary greatly supported. Many Rotarians participated in, and that's where a lot of this funding came from.
Excellent. 9.5 is to act on and approve a donation in the amount of $3,891 from the Guilford Touchdown Club to be used to pay the salary of an assistant football coach. So is there a motion that we approve that donation?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second, yeah. The only comment there, and it's in the letter, but that is not indicative of future being able to take and support that position in our budget.
No, I think the reason that, as I, this is several, a couple, at least a couple of years in a row, as I recall, a few years. The reason that this happened is because we weren't able to make a commitment within the budget process for an assistant coach's salary. So great, great that they have decided to fund that. You know, incidentally, next time somebody talks about pay-per-play, this is probably an example of something that goes away if we initiate right, but in any case.
Yep.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay. 9.6, Mrs. Dudley, we have a raft of received items.
It looks like a long list of things, but we were going to go through them very rapidly, because all those ones we're just removing, so.
And are these just receives tonight?
These first two are just to receive, the Physical Force 5710. This is a draft policy, and the policy had not been overlooked, looked over and reviewed since 1998. So it was really necessary to go through and update it. Mrs. Brown, the director, reviewed it and made recommendations and changes. And we also had other, looked at other policies from other schools. We had several sample policies to make comparisons to, and.
It's gone before the whole leadership team as well?
Yes, it did, the whole leadership team, so I'm just recommending this to be received for you to look at and review next, during the month, and not to be approved, to be approved next month.
Okay.
I think we treated this one over two sessions of the policy committee as well, the language is reworked.
Okay.
Okay, you want me to go on?
Sure.
You want to, okay.
And unless, are there, does anybody want to ask any questions?
This next one is much more interesting, though, the dissection of animals. And we were looking at, this is a brand-new policy, we did not have a policy. And the important sentence, I think, is, "The policy excuses any student from participating or observing animal dissections as part of classroom instruction if the student's parents or guardian has requested such in writing." So you can request for your child to be excluded if there is going to be an activity where the animals will be dissected.
This is a new legislative requirement.
This is a requirement.
This is a requirement.
State law, that's what, it's a brand-new policy. This is also just to receive and to review. Okay, to go on? All those numbers, the next one, two, three, four, five, six items are to remove from our policy book. And there's a very simple reason why these are all covered by either contracts or someplace else in, so they need not be a board policy, because it's already covered in contracts, teacher contracts, administrator contracts.